For joining us for our community development meeting today. It is June 13th, 2024. The time is 10:00 a.m. Attending this meeting are Commissioners Matarri and Duncan. Commissioner Brooks is excused, however, he will be watching the recording, so he may deliberate at a future date if any of our items are postponed. Opening remarks. We do have a public hearing, which the public is very much encouraged to talk about our ORA 24-0001 and our ZON 24-0001. However, the CUP 23-003, which is the reconsideration of the I-90 Wolf cell site, that is deliberations between the commissioners only, and we will not be taking public testimony on that this morning. There's been many opportunities for the public to weigh in on that, and we're at the deliberation stage. And I think that's all I have for opening remarks. Changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Conflicts of interest?
No, no conflicts.
None for me as well. So we will start our public hearing, and this is going to be ORA 24-0001, minimum lot size on the reservation. And I believe that Vlad will start us off. All right, David, well?
Good morning, Commissioners. David Callahan, Cooten County Community Development Director. This code amendment comes at your request as part of what was originally the tribe's request for a rezoning for all of the reservation area. You'll recall that one requested going from agricultural, or excuse me, from rural to agricultural. Your decision was to let everyone that wanted to opt out, and at last count, I'd say nine tenths of the property owners have, in fact, opted out. So if you'll just sort of set that aside, that was the precursor to where we are today, because as part of that decision-making, you all as a board suggested that we amend the development code so that within the reservation only, the rural zone would have a minimum lot size of 10 acres instead of 5 acres. So that's the proposal that's before you. There's an electronic version in your electronic file. I can pull it up here if you need to see it. I also have on the screen, and I assume you've already read, the staff report that went to the plan commission and to you that explains why this is before you, the background, the plan commission's review, which was on the 28th, that they recommended in favor on a vote of five to one to change the code. And then there's the full analysis here, starting here, of how this is supported by the comprehensive plan, or at least does not conflict. So I believe this is properly before you. I don't know of any other outstanding issues, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Yeah, we originally discussed maybe making a temporary adjustment.
And that's in here.
Okay.
And we would actually need you in your decision-making to tell us how to fill in that blank.
The effective date and the sunset date.
Thank you.
Section 6, if you're looking at the ordinance for the sunset.
I don't have any other questions. I mean, that really is the big thing.
Thank you. All right, then I will go ahead and open this up. Tyrell Stevenson, applicant slash representative. I'm not really sure you're the applicant in this particular one, but in favor, and do you wish to speak?
There we go. Good morning. My name is Tyrell Stevenson, the legislative director for the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. I apologize for checking the wrong box on that form. This is a conversation that we've had for a number of years, and it's come before the commissioners a couple of times now. And I really appreciate the time, effort, and energy that's gone into this discussion. It's an important one to a lot of folks who live down there and own property, and also to the tribe. Since the last time we've had this conversation, there've been a couple of developments I think might be of interest to the commissioners and others. You know, one of the things that we've talked about is the tribe's concern about the groundwater availability and supply down in the northern reservation area. And we've done some work on trying to quantify the amount of available water. One of the things that has informed our efforts in that is our experience with the city of Worley. Last year, I mentioned to the commissioner that the city of Worley's well had failed. And it has still failed. They're running on two smaller wells right now. And we've been, in coordination with the city of Worley, we've been trying to obtain more water supply. We've engaged a hydrogeologist, two of them, to study the geology in the area, and as well as a couple of well drillers. So we have a well driller on site. And a couple of the things that we've learned is that there are probably two aquifers in the area. One is at about 120 to 150 feet, and the other one is down below 700 feet in elevation. So the wells that most people are using for domestic use and for the municipal wells in the city of Worley are mining that shallower aquifer. And what we're seeing on the preliminary data that we have so far is that the water supply is being depleted by the use of it. And that's something that we're very concerned about. In order to keep sufficient water supply to the community of Worley, the tribe is drilling a large well outside of city limits, and we're down to about 700 feet right now. We haven't hit the lower aquifer yet. We're hoping that there really is a lower aquifer, and we'll be able to get to it. The geology in the area, for those that might not be familiar, on the Palouse is different than it is here in Coeur d'Alene or on the Rathram Prairie. Down there, we have a series of layers of basalt flows that have come in. In between them are clay layers. And what that does is it creates a really impermeable, very difficult to permeate layer, series of layers for water to get through. So it may look like there's a lot of water supply because in the winter and spring, it rains a lot. And, you know, we have lakes and rivers. But the water that people actually use comes from groundwater supply. It recharges at a very, very slow rate. We're also working to quantify what that rate of recharge is, but we know that it's difficult for water to permeate. Most of it runs off in the spring. Very little of it gets down into the groundwater aquifers where it's available to be pumped up for use. And that's something that we're going to continue working on, not only for purposes of supplying the existing users who are there, who have been on a water curtailment for the last eight months. We're hoping to be able to hook up a well so that people can continue to have drinking water and run showers and things like that. But as I've mentioned before, we're also in the middle of a water rights adjudication, general stream adjudication for the Coeur d'Alene and Spokane River basins. And as part of that, the tribe is a party. The Idaho Supreme Court has already affirmed the tribe's federal reserve rights in the lake and the tributaries that flow into the lake that are on the reservation, which would include Lake Creek, Rose Creek, Plummer Creek, which we believe we've got some hydrogeological data to support that those streams are fed by groundwater as well as surface water. So there is a connectivity between those aquifers and those streams where the tribe has federal reserve in-stream flow rights. As I mentioned before, one of the things that we're concerned about, not only for the water supply for the existing users, so that people don't run out of water, but also we're very concerned about future conflicts between the tribe's federal reserve rights and other domestic users. That's something that the tribe is very concerned about, doing what we can to avoid. While we have low-density development right now, rather than running into a situation where we're having to litigate and face the possibility of, you know, limiting domestic users' water supply, that's something the tribe is very concerned about. And for that reason, we support a modest and reasonable restriction. This isn't as much of a restriction as the tribe had requested initially, as you know. The tribe had initially requested just a zone change from rural to ag, which would have been a 20-acre minimum. But I think a 10-acre minimum would give a chance for maybe a little bit of a slowdown to alleviate some of those future conflicts, even if it is for a temporary period of time. And I think as we continue to work on these water supply issues as well as the adjudication, we're going to have more data available as time goes on to really be able to show how real these impacts are. As I stand before you right now, I can't tell you how much water is in that aquifer. We know that it is a limited supply. We know that it is being used up. The static water level is dropping. The wells, as we're seeing wells over time, decreasing in productivity. If we look at well logs from 40 years ago and 20 years ago, the well tests, the flow tests that we've done in the last few months are yielding lower flow than they did when they were drilled. And so we're also installing flow meters on the wells so that we can monitor static water level and productivity as time goes on, and hopefully get an idea of what the water supply is. But we believe it's a real issue that affects people and could affect, you know, not just the tribe, but other folks that have homes and domestic wells that are there, such as, you know, we saw in the Cougar Gulch area. So I'd stand for any questions that you may have, but we do support, you know, a reasonable restriction so that we can work on this.
Thank you. Questions?
I have no questions. Thank you so much.
I have a couple, Tyrell. Are there restrictions right now on tribal-owned land as far as subdivision or building?
There are. So right now, land ownership on the reservation is fairly complex, and it is different than outside. So there are different types of land ownership on the reservation. There are lands owned by individual tribal members, but that is rare. There are only a couple individual tribal members who own fee simple land on the reservation. There are also lands that the tribe owns in fee simple. As the tribe purchases land, it purchases in fee simple, much as anyone in Rathram would go and buy bare land. It would be in fee simple. Then there are lands that are owned in trust. So the United States actually holds title to the land for the benefit of, in trust for the tribe or individuals. So most tribal members on the reservation, they live on trust land that is actually owned by the United States in trust for the tribe. So the tribal government determines how that land is used. So tribal members who live in a home, for example, in Worley, they live on land that's owned by the United States in trust for the tribe. They have a home site lease that's usually for, you know, three-quarters of an acre or an acre, and they're able to build a home on that. The tribe faces the same infrastructure challenges that everybody else does, because you've got to have water supply. You've got to have sanitary sewer supply. And in that environment, on the Palouse, both of those things are very, very difficult because of the limitations on groundwater and because of the Rock Creek flows into the state of Washington. So the water quality requirements for Rock Creek are very stringent because it's the state of Washington. So it's limited, development is limited by those two factors. So the tribe purchases land, owns a lot of land, doesn't want to develop in large scale subdivisions, so the develop, you know, there's a housing shortage for the membership as there is for, you know, a lot of the community. So what the tribe is doing is building homes where there's available infrastructure, and there's already impact, and there is infrastructure to support them, including roads, water, power, and sewer. So that's a short way of saying that the restrictions are generated by the tribal council, but they're based on a plan to preserve forest land and ag land, because once you build houses on ag land-
Last crop you'll ever grow.
It is. So, yeah, so the tribe's priorities are to contain that development where it's already, where there's already the infrastructure to support it.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. I will go ahead and call on John Malloy. Opposed wishes to speak?
Hi, Commissioners. I am John Malloy, 1221 South Old Creek Road, Post Falls. And I am the lone dissenting voice on the planning and zoning commission. Now, Ty just gave you some information that I wasn't aware of until we visited shortly before the meeting, until his presentation just now. So I, and I'm not as articulate as he is. I need my notes. I'm going to read this, if you don't mind, and we'll see where things fall. I've got other comments to make about some of these. But so I don't like, I think there's not a lot good about this because basically, I think the timing is premature. The original zone change thing hasn't even been finalized yet, right? That's going to happen in June, on June 30th or something. And I think it's been confirmed just now that the reason this is up is because too many people opted out of the downzoning, the rezoning, which in my mind was a downzoning, and they opted out of it. So now we need another way to accomplish that downzoning that was missed the first time around. And the concern for water is the mechanism for doing that. And in my opinion, it's really a moratorium. The county doesn't, the county can't control application for drilling permits. That's the Department of Water Resources, I think. And so we need to find water as a means to create a moratorium. And I think that's even more of a moratorium because the expiration date has been proposed. Now, if the expiration date would be followed, I suppose there would be some hope. But I've seen government establish too many temporary things that become permanent. I don't have a lot of faith that it would be a temporary thing. And we have, I think you've both, you've all seen the study that was done of the wells in the area by one of the people living in the area. And it showed that actually the wells in that part of the reservation produce better than the wells in the southwest part of the county, and in fact, as good or better as the wells in all of Cooten County. So at least in areas other than Worley, it would appear there's not really a water problem. Now, I have, one of my fellow commissioners would argue that this is, that we should compromise. And I'm seeing now that that is with that. I mean, the tribe demanded a total rezone, and they didn't get it. So this would be the compromise, I guess, which would be a partial rezone from a 5-acre minimum to a 10-acre minimum. But to me, it's not a compromise at all. I am a firm believer in property rights, and especially in the rights that are included in the zoning at the time somebody buys property. So these people bought the property or understand that they have a 5-acre minimum as part of the zone, and now the county is saying, "Well, no, we were just kidding. Actually, it's a 10-acre minimum." And so you're going to lose the right to divide to five. So let's see, I'm not doing my reading like I should. But I will say that when we get to this, these justifications, if you look at them closely, I commend the staff for doing what they can to show support from the comp plan for this kind of thing. But I'm not sure it really does. The comp plan says, "Avoid downzoning." And the justification says, "Well, this is downzoning, but it's okay," I guess because we're talking about water. And the comp plan says, "To avoid uncertainty." And the justification says that this will be just as certain as it was before, which is kind of a circuitous type of reasoning. But this, in my opinion, it is uncertainty. The county commissioners are creating uncertainty by having a zone that allows a 10-acre minimum, and now saying, "No, it's a, did I say 5-acre minimum? Now we're saying 10." That's uncertainty. And what is to say that that couldn't be done again? In fact, my next point is that very thing. I call it incrementalism, and that is the means by which the tribe wants a total rezone. And it failed in that regard, at least for the fee simple owners. And so now the county wants to call it a 10-acre minimum instead of a 5. That's an incremental reduction in property rights. Director Callahan has told us at least twice, so the answer is the same every time we ask. And that is, have you talked to the tribe to see if they will cease objecting to divisions of property, even if it's, you know, to a 10-acre minimum? Or say, a larger parcel to a 20-acre minimum? And the answer to that question is the tribe has not responded and will not respond. So what that means to me is we can go from a 5-acre minimum to a 10-acre minimum in next month and next year, or maybe the end of this moratorium, and we'll be talking about a 20-acre minimum. I haven't been keeping track of time. I don't know if there's a limit, but I think I'm about done. I can ignore my other notes and rest. If there are any questions?
Questions?
Well, I'd like to just clarify the record for you. You may not have caught the point that when we initially discussed this, the idea was not to force the community, the people who live there, to change the zoning, but at the same time, to look at the 10-acre minimum lot size. At the same time, it wasn't because one failed and the next was brought up as a later idea. The intent, of course, is to get data. One of the things that doesn't happen very much that I've seen is that decisions are being made that are data-driven. And, you know, I hear anecdotally, of course, that people's wells are drying up. And, you know, for a retired couple, it's devastating who don't have a lot of money to be able to drill a new well, especially because there's growth around their property. And the well was always well, you know, a good-performing well. So if anything, I see this as an opportunity for prudent to protect the property rights of those people who live there because part of that property right is the well that they have, the good-performing well. And what does that do to somebody's property values when they have to get water trucked in? You know, what do they, what happens when they have to get another well? So it's not a, some sort of a cynical idea here to have government do the tribe's bidding, that in fact, what it is, is that we're starting to see these issues because of growth here. And so we want to at least make data-driven decisions. And the tribe actually is working to put together reports, hydrological reports, so we can get a better snapshot. It's not meant to penalize people, and it's not meant to do anyone's bidding. It's just to kind of protect the folks that live there now who have these wells. And yes, there is information about some of these wells that looks good, but there is no data that's monitored these wells since they were initially drilled to keep track of their productivity. And so it's very difficult. I mean, if we could get more people to put monitors on their wells, we could probably have a much better snapshot of what's going on down there.
I understand. May I respond?
Sure.
Yeah, so I apologize if I misunderstood. To me, the timing just looked like one didn't work, and so we need some other reason. So I am guilty of that. And that's exactly how I perceived it. And I do, I do take it as the county doing some bidding for the tribe. So I'm guilty of that, too. I'm half of one of those elderly couples whose well went dry when the neighbor drilled, and we dealt with it on a neighbor-by-neighbor basis, on a case-by-case basis. I was the case, and we dealt with it. The idea of, I would say, penalizing, changing the zoning for everybody in that situation, the 20 acres in larger, in a rural zone within the reservations, penalizing everybody because somebody's well went dry, that doesn't seem fair to me. And it doesn't seem fair to me that everyone within those reservation boundaries are restricted when the fellow across the street is not. So you've got not only uncertainty, but you've got injustice, I would call it, because some people are restricted in the same zone, it's a rural zone. I suppose you could change the name of the zone to something else so you don't have that issue. But now the rural zone has two definitions. One is if you're in the reservation, and one is if you're not. So I still stand opposed. I understand what you're saying. And I think your job is a thankless one, if that helps any.
Well, thank you.
So, and then, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, if I may? Mr. Malloy brought up an issue that I believe might be useful to clarify when he raised the concern that this might become permanent. That would take another action of the board because the way this is written, you'll recall, the sunset date is absolute, meaning the regulation becomes null on the date certain that you write in here. Thank you.
If I may, I understand that, too. All it takes is a majority vote of the board of commissioners to extend that date.
Sure.
Well, just as well, it takes a majority vote of the board to change the zoning to make things permanent at any point in time, so.
Exactly.
Anyone else like to speak in favor or opposed to the zone, I'm sorry, speak the right language here, the minimum lot size on the reservation? So I just have, I think it's a rhetorical question. I don't really think I want answers because there's 30 of us here, and I think we can get 35 opinions. But does somebody have a right to build a home on property that does not have water? Do they have a right to build a cistern and truck in water? Do they have a right to live somewhere where there is no water available?
That is a rhetorical question.
Okay. So, thank you. Anybody on Zoom?
No one but staff.
Okay. Then are you comfortable with ending public testimony and putting deliberations to June 27th?
I move that we end public testimony.
Hang on, I might have another question. Hold on. I just want to make, sorry. I got notes in two different places. Okay, I think everything can wait until deliberations. Sorry, go ahead.
I move that we end public testimony and move to deliberations for a future date, June 27th, for ORA 24-0001, which is the minimum lot size on the reservation.
Second, Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right. Our next item is ZON 24-0001, and this is Osborne Zone Change. Let me pull this up real quick. And Vlad, are you leading us through this one?
That is correct.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cooten County Community Development. I'm hoping that this project is going to be less controversial than the previous one. This is also a rezone, but for an individual that resides on a property off of Highway 53 just east of Rathram. The subject property is approximately 11 acres in size, and it's fairly level. It is over the- It is over the offer. There is an existing residence on site and the intent, of course, with every rezone, is to be able to subdivide it should the zone change be approved. The property is currently zoned agriculture and the intent is to go to rural. One of the first things that we look for when we conduct a pre-application meeting for a zone change is we look for things like compatibility and consistency specifically. We look at the surrounding zoning and whether or not the proposed zoning will be a good fit, meaning implying that, is there adjacent zoning that's similar in designation? In this case, as you can see, there is rural zoning to the west and to the north of the subject property, and then there's agricultural to the east and south. Moreover, I think it's important to also look at the existing development, whether or not the parcel sizes that are in the area are consistent with what the intent of the applicant will be once they decide to go through a subdivision process should the zone change be approved. With those two considerations in mind, we concluded at a pre-application meeting as well as through the review process, that the rezone to rural would really not be problematic and would be consistent with the zoning and the development in the area. There are parcels that are five acres in size and that the 11 acre piece, if it goes through a minor subdivision process to create five to six acre parcels of land, would really be consistent with the existing residential development in the area. The comprehensive plan for the subject property is suburban and it does state under the comprehensive plan designation that suburban should be, suburban comprehensive plan should be reviewed to determine whether or not underutilized parcels could be rezoned and/or upzoned to allow for smaller parcels. As you can see, some of these photos were taken earlier this spring and in the winter time. The, the property is fairly flat. It does have a significant amount of vegetation and an existing residence and outbuildings. We went through the agency comment period and it appears that really no one had any concerns. In a lot of cases, when we present zone changes to jurisdictional agencies, they seem to imply comments that are more relevant to subdivision process. And we have to be very careful that we analyze each project based on its own merits. We need to make sure that the zone change is strictly to assess compatibility and consistency rather than the impacts and mitigation for the subsequent subdivision if the zone change is approved. So really no controversy there or any concerns. With regard to public comment, during the both public comments for the hearing examiner as well as the board hearing, there was only one comment in support. This is really a non-controversial request. And as I mentioned before, under staff analysis, the primary purpose of this suburban designation is to promote the development of vacant or underutilized parcels. Some could argue that 11 acre parcel is, is utilized in a manner that is very common or consistent with rural zoning, but some could argue that it's underutilized and could be further subdivided. We don't have any issue with the rezone and the subsequent subdivision. As I mentioned, that there are parcels that are five acres in size in the area and therefore we support the applicant's request. The hearing examiner heard this matter on April 18th of this year and subsequently recommended approval. We don't have anything else to add to the H E recommendation and I stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Questions from Vlad?
No questions.
I just have one and you may not be able to tell me. That whole, I see agricultures, you know, to the right off the page as well, but the agriculture zoning, do you know how many, if all of that were to be come forward and changed, how many five acre lots that would end up being?
I don't know. I don't have an answer for you on that. But we, we rarely entertain multiple parcel rezones. Primarily, it's because it's a quasi judicial matter. An individual comes in and they are only concerned about their property.
Sure.
It's rare that we process more than two or three at the same time, which we can. And we would analyze them in that regard to make sure that the, the number of parcels that are part of their request would not be problematic to cause so much impact if they were to be further intensified in use.
Okay, thank you. All right. Beth Osborne, applicant, may wish to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing this request. I am Beth Osborne. Do you need my address? No, it's, it's 4882 West Highway 53, the, that proposed property. My husband and I, Thomas Osborne, are requesting a zone, zone change from agricultural to rural and on our approximately 11 acre parcel of land. And basically, we agree with everything that Vlad has presented to you. Do you have any questions for me? I may be able to address the question you had for him, just like about the, the sizes of the properties there?
Yeah, I, that's.
No.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, this piece is 11 and it's the biggest piece. These are all like seven, seven, eight, nine, so none of, none of the rest of them would ever be split according to the rules that are in place.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. All right, anyone else want to speak in favor or against this zone change? Anybody on Zoom?
No one but staff on Zoom.
Okay. Then I would take a motion to end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
I move that we end public testimony and move into deliberations for Z O N 24 dash 0001, Osborne Zone Change.
Second.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, thoughts?
It's consistent with the area, so I have no issues with it.
Okay, I agree. And motion?
I move that we approve Z O N 24 dash 0001, Osborne Zone Change.
Second.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, Z O N 24 dash 0001 has been approved and now we will move into our deliberations. Did you want to change the order or you, does it matter to you?
Oh, it doesn't matter. I'm fine.
Okay.
Either way.
All right, we'll just go ahead then. I don't know, does staff have a preference?
Chair Duncan, I would prefer that we do the executive session first.
Okay, so then, so then can we go ahead with the V A R 24? So we'll handle item four and then.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Okay. All right, just kind of get that away before we go into executive session. And I would say that we could use room two for executive session so our audience would not have to leave. All right, item four, V A R 24 dash 0002, Party of Aston. And who is leading us in this one? Is that Vlad again?
Aye, as well.
Okay.
Commissioners, once again, for the record, Vlad Finkel with Cooten County Community Development. This is a request by Mr. and Mrs. Aston for a variance to the front yard setbacks in the restricted residential zone. You guys are likely very familiar with this area. There have been numerous dozens of, at least a dozen, maybe two dozen, a variance request in this area in the last decade or so. This is specifically a request to the front yard setback along Lower Hayden Lake Road. Due to the steepness of the site and topography in the area, a majority of the property owners have come in over the course of last several decades to request a variance. In this case, the applicants are seeking a variance to the 25 foot front yard setback. They would like to be within 10 feet of the 50 foot prescriptive right of way along Lower Hayden Lake Road and therefore they would be encroaching 15 feet into the front yard setback. A similar request was approved by the Board of County Commissioners approximately a year ago for the adjoining property. In that case, it was Mr. and Mrs. Zimmerman that requested a similar 15 foot or an identical 15 foot variance with a 10 foot setback. There was a retaining wall along the front of the property which has since been removed to make way for the building pad. These are some of the photos of the property in question. The applicants have come in last fall and requested a site disturbance permit to make some alterations to the property and remove the retaining wall. The site has been buttoned up in terms of stormwater runoff and at this point they're kind of patiently awaiting for the board to make a decision so that they can move forward with their project. This is the proposed site plan. The hardship, as I stated, is, is steep slopes. There's actually a lot of groundwater. There's a lot of springs in the area. And so it's a challenging site to develop. The primary intent is to have the house as close as possible to the road right of way so that it would minimize the amount of excavation and retaining walls for the construction of the residence on site. With every challenging property that has extremely steep slopes or has a high water table or has ground, groundwater, we request a geotechnical analysis. This is primarily to assess whether or not it is feasible to construct on this site and it also provides for specific guidelines for the construction of future residents, including compaction, grading, footings, foundations and so forth. Typically, a geotechnical engineer goes out, they do test pits and they take core samples, soil core samples to lab and they analyze them to determine whether or not it is suitable. In most cases, it is suitable, but they look at specific guidelines for future development, which will be incorporated into the site disturbance permit as well as the building permit on site should the zone, excuse me, should the variance be approved. We did solicit comments from agencies with jurisdiction. Everyone seemed to be on board. I think pretty much all the agencies understand that this area is quite problematic for enforcing the strict letter of the law with a 25 foot front yard setback. Therefore, really no one had raised any concerns. During the public comment period, we had one coming in support, one in opposition, one neutral. I think one of the comments that was in opposition was pretty similar to one that was brought up in the adjoining variance request last year is the folks were concerned that the proximity of the structure in relation to the right of way would lead to site distance concerns due to the curvature of the road. But that has not been an issue that was brought up by the highway district. Therefore, we don't find that to be problematic. I have driven out to this property on numerous occasions and I don't see there being a problem there myself. So just to reiterate our points, there is an undue hardship because of the characteristics of the site. This is not self-imposed and the highway district has no concerns with visibility or traffic impacts. The hearing examiner heard this request on May 2nd of this year and subsequently recommended approval. And I stand for any questions that you have, you may have for me at this time.
All right, questions for Vlad?
No, no questions. Thank you.
All right, thoughts?
It's consistent with other lots in the area, so I see no reason to, to not approve it.
Okay. I agree. And once again, this is that case for that overlay district where, yeah, just the neighborhood requires us to do this process instead of having an overlay where it would just be understood. So, until that can happen, I would take a motion.
I move that we approve V A R 24 dash 0002, Aston.
Second.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, now we can handle C U P 23 dash 0003, and this is reconsideration of I-90 Wolf cell site. And there is a, an executive session attached to this. So if you are ready to make a motion, then we could, staff along with counsel could go use room two and, and talk about this. And Sarah, would you go to make sure room two's open?
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74 dash 2061F.
Second.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, folks, hang tight and we'll be right back with you.
Should just be a few minutes.
Okay. And do we need to bring any? Okay, and do we need to bring any?
Executive session, one F with staff to proceed.
Second.
Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. Uh, all right, we are in deliberations, and I am just pulling up my notes here. So I don't know if you would like to start with yours?
Well, um I have a document that I want to put into the record, and I added some uh, it's, much of it is still the same as the previous document. I paid very close attention to what was presented in the appeal. And um a couple of things that stood out to me. The first one was that even in the uh appellate's own, own documentation, um they stated that the temporal effects of cell towers were also examined, and it was found that the discount associated with the proximity to a tower is smaller during times of upward trending home prices versus times when home prices are falling. And uh so it's clear, even in the appellate's own words, that it does affect property values. Uh, it's just a matter of the degree with respect to the trending of whether real estate is going up or going down, and that is one of the factors that a commissioner can take into effect in decisions like this. Um, the other is the fact that when you go back to the original hearing on December 14th, at two hours, 32 minutes, and 42 seconds into that video that we have posted, the applicant stated that conditions affected ability to obtain a signal. Uh, this is not the same as stating there is no cell signal. He went on to state that during the summer months on I-90, more people use it, the signal dissipates. So one time you might drive through this corridor and have better coverage, and other times maybe not. The applicant also stated that they, the residents, need better service. That is not the same as there is no service. And so I don't see any compelling evidence uh from the appeal uh for my mind to change.
All right, um I agree with that, and I too pulled out um similar items, and just to um reiterate the specific language, um the proposal needs to be compatible with existing homes, businesses, neighborhoods, and with natural characteristics of the area, and the proposal must be adequately addressed site constraints, hazards, adequately mitigates, and uh negative environmental, social, and economic impacts. And so once again, I think that uh I too would hold up our original decision and uh deny the request, well, it's not that we're denying the request reconsideration, but we're not changing our minds.
And I'd also like to add that this board has also uh very readily approved recently a cell tower, uh where it was clear that there was a gap in coverage.
Yes.
Um, there was no real debate even with that. Uh, the, the question here is, you know, and even with the applicant's own words, you know, is there a legitimate debate or a gap in coverage? And is their coverage, and is that coverage affected by traffic? And those were the applicant's own words in the initial public hearing, uh at that date and time uh that I said on the video, so.
Agreed. All right, I would take a motion then.
Uh, on this one, we are going to deny the reconsideration. So I move that we deny C U P two three dash zero 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 three reconsideration of I-90 Wolf cell site.
Second.
Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
Um, your document be read into the record as B three thousand.
You want to hand that over? Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, item five. This is our business section, and everybody's welcome to stay or you, you may leave. Um, this is about a fee increase for our community development services, and uh Mr. Callahan, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason I wanted to talk with you today about fee increases is if possible, I'd like to get your direction before we actually put the numbers together and go for a public hearing, assuming that we're going for more than 5%, which requires a public hearing. And you'll recall, Brandy has suggested that we aim at the 12% range for the fee increase. That actually makes some common sense to me because, then, for two reasons. First of all, we're a little bit blinded, if you will, because the software that tracks our revenues and the software that checks it once it's in the accounting staff division doesn't talk together very well. So I, I don't have a good way to reconcile right now today. The number's coming in and the number's going out. But from what I see, it looks like 12% is rational and reasonable just to keep up with overall costs and inflation, consumer price, consumer price index, that sort of thing. Um, 5% probably doesn't get us there. So there needs to be some number above 5, and I hesitate to go above 12 because even at 12, we will be one of the higher municipalities in North Idaho, from what I can tell. But again, that's because we're aiming for cost recovery. Over time, we've gotten better and better at looking at exactly what it costs us to do these kinds of cases. And I can tell you, after 43 years of doing this kind of work in seven other municipalities, I don't know of any municipality but one that actually has full cost recovery. That one municipality actually does it the way a consultant would. They, they actually charge on an hourly basis based on a tracking system of what the staff actually spends. We've never gone there because it takes a lot of time and effort to work these things like a consultant.
And you, you create inequity then, because if you get somebody like Vlad versus a planner who's been here less time, then Vlad typically would be more efficient and spend less time. Of course, his hourly rate is probably higher, but it's, that, that, that would be concerning to me. I, I wouldn't want to really go down that path. And, and I don't think that we're going to get here um completely either because even if we go up 12%, I still think that there are due process issues with charging too much with some of the um reconsideration or the appeal process. So I would still want those to be somewhat subsidized.
Right. And actually, we, we're proposing to reduce the appeal fee to where it would be the same as reconsideration fee, because me, I agree with you. I think there's an access to justice issue there if we charge too much.
Okay.
And that much we already have in the fee schedule.
Perfect. Um, yes, so I mean, I, I'm fine, and the public can absolutely weigh in um at the public hearing for, for these fees increases. Your thoughts?
Um, the, the, this is, just from my experience in the business side of things, this is a business question. It's very straightforward, and um on the private sector, engineering firms, they do have different rates for people, and they track time with projects. And so there's nothing that is happening here that isn't a problem, that isn't being addressed in the private sector with time, materials, things like that, as far as tracking. Because the project has to be designed and the project has to be reviewed. So I think that what we need to do is figure out how we can start developing metrics within the department to better understand how that time is really being spent so that we can properly charge the fees and, and make the department as self-serving or self-sufficient, I guess, as possible. Because we increased the fees last year, and it didn't seem to do much, make enough of a difference. And I don't think we should be doing that every year, and we, you know, and I'm not saying that this is, you know, somebody's fault, but we do have a system that doesn't talk efficiently with our accounting system. So we need to figure out how to bridge that a little bit, too. And I agree that we should spread the uh appeals and things like that into the initial fees so that it doesn't become too expensive for somebody. But I see that this is something that can easily be figured out with a little extra effort at looking at, you know, who's doing what, how long it takes, and as the numbers come in, you start to hit what's called the law of larger numbers, and then you can start to get much more precise with what a good fee is for something. With any one particular person, I agree, it's hard to tell. But if you look at an, a year or two years' worth of activity, you can start to get down to this is what the average time is that it takes to do this. This is what the average cost is in my department. And then when we add a step, when we add another planner, things like that, it's an easy metric to update those numbers. And then the other thing, too, which we haven't talked about, is a service level. How long do we want it to take to turn these around? Because we know that if you want a one-week turnaround, you're going to need a lot more staff. If you want a 10-week turnaround, you know, is that what we're shooting for? And so that should try to, that should be driving what our staffing levels are, which drives our costs.
Which is, so that adds another problem. If we raise our fees based on a certain level of service and then we can't fill that level of service, but yet we're charging the fee for it, that's, that's another thing. Uh, the other thing I would bring up is, in private business, people have a choice. They, they don't like that firm, they can go to a different firm. We are a monopoly, so I want to be very, very careful that we are not 100% um equating ourselves with business because nobody has a choice. They have to. If you're building in the county, you've got to come to us. So it's a, you know, it's, we are requiring.
Well, yeah, and if I could just make that differentiation for you. Typically in a monopoly, you, what you do is you charge a premium because there's no other choices. With government, we don't charge for a profit, we charge our costs. So we're not looking at making a profit off of this. What we're really looking to do is develop metrics so that we can identify efficiencies so we can actually lower the cost. So we don't make a profit, unlike a typical private sector monopoly.
No, I, I understand that, but we are a monopoly of service.
Yeah, but we're also, we, we can't charge what, more than the cost. And so if we want to focus on decreasing costs, we should focus on increasing efficiency within the department and not looking at taxpayers in any way, shape, or form to subsidize that cost.
There are some difficult aspects to this that are not so simple to resolve, like 60% of the time, our statistics show us, applications are incomplete for building permits, not for land use planning. I don't know what the number is for land use planning. But I do, I have seen myself, because I get complaints and I go into the IMS and look, and it is not at all unusual for an applicant to ping pong back and forth between staff and their consultants as many as 12 times before we get something like a complete application. And that adds an extraordinary expense that's hard to measure, frankly.
Well, the question is, who's uh, who's looking at the applications before they're complete? And, you know, are we using $75-an-hour type people to do this, or are we using 25 that can go through a checklist and make sure that it's sufficient? I, I, I'm willing to bet that these kinds of problems, because we've already had this discussion with, in other departments, where we have people who are getting paid way more uh to do jobs that are more clerical because they don't have the staffing. And so, you know, what we have to do is make sure that the right person is doing the right job, that they're capable of, at the right rate, and that's, that's a form of efficiency, too. So, you know, if we could just feed the planners, you know, perfectly uh packaged uh applications and not have them look through it and then say, oh, this is, this is incomplete, we could develop some efficiencies there. I'm not saying that it's easy. I'm not saying that it's just you wave a magic wand and it will just happen. But what I am trying to say is that the more we can start to develop these systems to help process this stuff, the, the, the more efficient we can become, and then we can get a better handle on our fee structure and make it lower.
Agreed. And we have certainly gotten better, you should know. Um, when I first started here over a decade ago, there was no one on staff that understood or knew why or how our fee schedule worked. The numbers were literally this sort of thing. So we've come a long way. But back to your point, just if I may belabor this just a minute, because it's, it's complex. I, I have watched the permit techs and the plan reviewers and others on our staff communicate with all levels of people trying to get complete applications. We've tried any number of variety of things, like a checklist, like meeting with them in person, like using PDFs. It's astounding to me, but there are professionals out there, some of them are P E's, some of them are architects, they don't care how you present it. They look at the PDF, they look at the checklist. We still get a checklist from an engineer that says everything's complete, and then our permit tech, which is the lowest level of person we have, looks at it, and it's not there. They have lied, over and over again. So, you know, it's just frustrating.
Of course. Well, I still think that there's a way that you can develop. Of course. Well, I still think that there's a way that you can develop your cost structure. And 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 again, the law of numbers will tell you that you can come up with pretty good, you know, basic metrics for something. When you do repeat processes over and over, even though they're a little different here and there, you start to develop good average averages. And then from that point, you look for ways to increase the efficiency, which will lower the cost, which is a savings that can get passed on to the applicants. And so the rhetorical question is, is your department, is any department running at optimal efficiency? And if the answer is no, then then, you know, we can always find ways to make it a little better.
Agreed. For now, are you okay with twelve percent?
I am with the condition that we can try to develop some numbers.
Working on it.
Some numbers and some service levels that go with that. And then we we know whether we're achieving them or not. I mean, one of the problems that I've noticed, just, you know, being in this chair for the last year and a half, is that we don't really make data-driven decisions. We don't. It's all largely anecdotal. And it's just, it's big, it's big, you know, macro-type stuff. And to me, you know, the efficiency is not about, you know, how we can cite more people on the road, but more how we can run a lean operation and not require as much money from others, whether it's a user or taxpayer, to subsidize the operation because we have three people doing the job that one person could do with some technology. I mean, I can tell you, just from my own personal experience, that we deal with hundreds of thousands of customers with a very small number of people, very small number. We use technology all the time to to leverage that when we can. So, but I would like to be able to work with you if that's something that you and your department would be open to.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
David Vlad would like to add something. You got to come to a microphone.
Yeah, sure.
David, you you raised the point about the deficiencies that the plans examiners and permit technicians face. I if if you don't mind, I could actually provide some information with regard to what planners, current planners and project planners face. And I, in my experience, and Ben and I have had this discussion on many different occasions, more more than, I would say, between out of ten projects, eight to nine projects are deficient when they are submitted online through our IMS online portal. I would say on an average eighty-five percent, between eight and nine projects are deficient. And Commissioner Matarri, when you say that some of the information can be quantifiable, what we do on our end is really difficult to quantify its qualitative data. We review documents that are, we review them for analytical data, for empirical data, for information that would support an application and be consistent with other documents that are part of the required checklist. Eighty-five percent, maybe even close to ninety percent, nine out of ten projects are deficient. We have projects right now that I'm currently have on my desk that are over two years, over twenty-four months in the making to be complete and sufficient. And we're still getting piecemealed information. And in a lot of cases, I hate to use the word spaget at a wall, but that's exactly what it is. People throw spaghetti at a wall and they expect it for for it to stick. And that is the the difficulty we have. Writing a staff report is less difficult than doing completion and sufficiency review. That that's my position.
Yeah, and and you're already giving out numbers which support my feeling. Eighty to ninety percent or seventy to eighty percent are incomplete, right? So once you start to develop these numbers, you can start to understand your cost structure better. There is no one application that is the same. In fact, I would argue that every application is different. However, after you have personally done a hundred applications, I can tell you with relative accuracy what the average amount of time it's going to take for you to do an application. And if I can have a hundred applications as my basis, we get past statistical significance, right? So now I can say that the next hundred applications you get are probably, on average, going to take you an X amount of time. And then we add the cost structure for you in there, right? And then we can start to say, well, you know, for you to do a hundred applications in a year, and some of them will be applications that you received two years before, some of them will be a year before and some of them will be that year that will get done. And some of them you'll you won't touch and get completed for another two years. So the law of numbers will tell us this information. If as far as any individual application, I can't tell you what that will be. But if you give me enough of them, I can tell you on average, that's what it should be. And I'm comfortable with that from a metric standpoint with your department. But I would never pick any one application and say, this one should take you two and a half days.
We'll keep working on it.
Okay. And there is a way for IT to ask your current software provider to add some things if you find that you need them for metrics or for finances.
Done that routinely.
Good, good. Okay, anything else on the fees?
Not on that item. I think we're good.
Okay, item six, discussion of possible new county road system. Standards, better than system?
Should be, say, private road standards.
Private road standards.
That's what it really means.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
The North Idaho Development Professionals is a self-named group of mostly engineers. There is a surveyor, at least one that I know of, and a planner as part of this group, have been working hard to come up with new ideas. And in your packet, I have their their draft, your electronic packet, I mean, and also an email from Eric Olson that explains the why behind why they're working on this. The reason I wanted to get it in front of you today, or reasons, are that we've have already spent a fair amount of staff time. We've been to the Plan Commission a couple of times. And we we are starting to see some things that I just wanted to get in front of you because I don't want to spend a lot more staff time and Plan Commission time and these professional consultants' time if there are things in here that bother you. And there are things that may. So first of all, let me just kind of give you a broad overview. Again, there are some things that interrelate with roads that we need to stay mindful of, like we've been working with Pat to come up with changes to the code so as to rein in what we're calling serial minor subdivisions. That the serials directly relate to our road standards. So that's part of why we've held off from a a code amendment, which we have partially ready to go forward, that would fix part of the serial problem. You know, we purposely pulled back on that. Plus, Pat, as you know, has been extraordinarily busy. So I haven't pushed him. But we do have, if you'll just keep in the back of your mind, we do have at least a partial solution for the serial minor issue. The road standards need to factor into that because it's an issue and part of it. But I don't know that we need to hold up this piece that we have ready to go forward anymore. I think as soon as he, Pat, has time, I'd like to get it in front of the Plan Commission and you. So at least we cut off some of the serial aspect of this. I just, I bring it up just so you know it's related. Another aspect to this, or I guess, couple of things. The draft proposal that the group has come up with would require either a pass-through cost for an engineer to look over all this work or our own in-house engineer. I'm a little concerned about adding our own in-house engineer only because it's taken eight months and I still hadn't been able to fill the new position you granted me, us, for the site disturbance work. I have another interview today. I think I'm hopeful this person is a registered landscape architect, but I have had zero professional engineers apply. All of the people that have applied so far have been landscape architects. So if if we were to try and hire our own professional engineer, I'm fairly certain that we would have to pay more than this position we tried to do for the site disturbance work. So if you just sort of keep that in the back of your mind. Another fairly significant change, when you have a chance to, if you haven't already read through what the proposal is, is it would allow private roads in minor subdivisions and/or private roads within dedicated rights-of-way in minor subdivisions. That gets a little wonky because a dedicated right-of-way would typically go to the highway district. But there are cases where the highway district will accept a right-of-way, but not accept the maintenance or the road itself. So one of the big changes this would have, if we go forward with this sort of thing, is it would allow minor sub, excuse me, major subdivisions to have private roads in them. That hasn't actually been possible since nineteen ninety four, or ninety-five, if I did my research right.
Yeah, I think that sounds right.
In ninety-five, our subdivision ordinance allowed us to have private roads if the commissioners agreed in major subdivisions. We just had standards. We had a sixty-foot right-of-way, twenty-four-foot width, and then a ballast encrusted rock and so on and so forth. They weren't engineered, per se. There was no horizontal, vertical alignment done. They were just those minimum standards. But at least it was a private road standard up until ninety-five. Ever since ninety-five, it's been mandatory that major subdivisions meet highway district standards.
So couldn't we put that language in this? If you are a major subdivision, then these do not apply. You must have highway district standard roads.
Oh, you could, but that's not the proposal that's in front of.
Sure.
Okay, just wanted you to be aware of that. And the highway districts haven't actually told me what they think about this yet. I've met with them a couple of times along with the engineering group. They've been at the table, if you will. There was three of the four supers at the last Plan Commission meeting. We will all continue to meet and continue to work on this unless you tell us you have major issues with this and tell us to stop. But again, I, it it would be a big change for the highway districts and I'd like for them to weigh in on this at some point to help you decide where you want to go with this. The the third thing that I just want to bring up for consideration is if we were to go the way this proposal charts, it's conceivable that we might get a rash of new growth because roads would cost thirty to fifty percent less than they do right now, at least by the mathematics the engineers are showing us. And so, for instance, if you go back to twenty sixteen, when we changed the code and made it easier to do minor subdivisions, by twenty twenty-one, we had four times as many minor subdivisions as we have ever had in the history of the county. I'm a little concerned that if, you know, with this new proposal, we might have another blush of new major subdivisions because it costs so much less.
Well, major or minor?
Both.
Okay, because.
But ma, but especially major and especially if you could do private roads in a major subdivision.
Yeah, so already, right off the bat, I'm I'm not in favor of the major road subdivisions being able to use private road standards. I I think that they need to continue on with the highway district standards.
Highway district?
Yeah, that that would be my first.
Well, that's why I wanted to get in front of you so we could have a dialogue. And Eric wanted to be here today. So you can hear from the horse's mouth, if you're so inclined, if you'll pardon the metaphor, and if we have time. Or if you want to bring this back around for another discussion at another meeting, I'm perfectly fine with that. I just wanted to start to get this in front of you so we could have a dialogue.
And the the reduced cost, is that because the standard is lower than what other developers are using or?
No, it's it's an engineered standard that, right now, we're not getting. You know, you wouldn't know, but right now, if it's a a minor subdivision, just to make it easy, it meets a fire district standard. But a fire district standard is not an engineered road. There is no horizontal and vertical. There isn't even a road base, per se. All there is is a width, sometimes a height. And and then the fire guys tell us if the road is, meets their view of what's their equipment needs.
Well, that sounds like that's a lower standard than what you're proposing.
Lower standard, but but in a major subdivision, it is automatically a highway district standard. And that is automatically a higher standard than what's the draft in your electronic file folder because there are, there is no in-between right now. There's either highway district or fire district. And this proposal would at least give us some options. They're engineered options and they're gradated, or they have gradients.
So it's a higher standard for the minor subdivisions, but a lower standard for the majors?
If it were adopted for the majors, it would be.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Definitely a higher standard for the minor subdivisions.
All right, I, now I understand.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's something to think about.
For the minor, I think it's fine. I I agree with you on the major. I mean, these are larger communities. There's a higher expectation. I mean, one of the things with private roads that I've seen, which doesn't really get addressed here, and I don't know if it even can be touched, is the maintenance afterwards.
That's a huge part of it.
Because the neighbors that I've spoken with who live on private roads, oh my goodness, you know, I don't live all the way at the end. I don't see why I got to pay that much. Yet, when you live closer up, if you live at the end, there's more wear and tear on the roads closer to the larger arteries because there's more traffic traveling, you know, down them. And so finding equitable solutions a lot of times, and of course, no one kicks in monthly like in HOA. They have to be rallied to kick in five, ten, twenty thousand dollars to update that road.
I know on some subdivisions, we require a a road development agreement. But is that only sometimes? It's not every minor subdivision?
Go ahead. You're talking about minor subdivisions or major subdivisions?
I don't know.
You can start with minor and then go to major.
So if there's shared infrastructure, then there is a requirement to have a document that there is maintenance. There is an agreement that they're going to, you know, participate in the maintenance of this long-term maintenance. With major subdivisions, if it's dedicated to the public, of course, it's maintained by the public, the highway district. If it's going to be private, then there is that same document which forces, you know, properties to enter into this this agreement or this subdivision. When you buy a property here, then you're going to be participating. So there is the requirement of the county to maintain, or at least have a document to maintain that. The execution of it, that's all on the homeowners association or the private property owners, whoever that may be.
So.
Or road maintenance associations, sometimes those are formed.
So I can actually, I can actually see where this document could apply to a major subdivision that was private gated and that had the agreement. And so it was just kept internal instead of being put out to the highway district. So I'll have to think about it a lot more.
Yeah, well, I mean, it would go through the planning commission process, too, and they would have a recommendation to you, so.
Yeah, but right now, it just sounds like it's, and I didn't read Eric's email, so I, was that in our packet? Because I just.
It is, but it just came in yesterday.
Oh, well, then I'll be happy to read it then. Because I I think that we have had that conversation where the road, the highway district standards are, I think, overkill for some developments. But now that I realize that this is for, would apply to minors, now you are increasing the cost of minors. Because highway, uh, fire district standard would be less than than what this requires. So it's going to increase the cost of minors.
Assuming we got to, yeah.
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 Okay. Okay, stuff to think about.
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
As I say, then again, if you make a better road to begin with, you might not have to pay as much maintenance.
Sure.
Further on, so.
No, that's that's definitely a an idea.
So I'll plan on rescheduling another conversation if that's all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, eleven thirty, meeting adjourned. All right. Eleven thirty, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.